... The United States of America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and the visible liberty and justice for all.
Here we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Zwicker?
Ms. Brier?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Corman. I move the absent councilmember to be excused.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Prince, that councilmembers, what could be excused? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So we're going to begin this evening with a special presentation. Karen Burgsvik.
Good evening. I'm going to be doing a presentation on the severe weather shelter and the one night count of the homeless. And get it up.
If you need some help, we'll send Jay up there.
I might, but, all right. So tonight's presentation is on the severe weather shelter and the one night count. Both of these events happened in January, and it's going to be a story about the homeless in Renton, as well as the caring community that responded to it, and the partnerships that made that happen. The severe weather shelter started last year when there was a need to have something that was activated, when it was 32 degrees or below for 24 hours, or imminent snow of three inches or more, or if the weather presented a substantial threat. It's actually a partnership between Harambe Church, otherwise known as Soma Communities, Catholic Community Services in the city of Renton. It's called a low-barrier shelter because it pretty much will take anyone that can walk through its doors. If people have alcohol or drug problems, as long as they're not influencing other people, that's okay, because the idea is to have it, as many people come to the shelter as possible so they won't freeze to death. Its sole purpose is to keep people safe and warm. So in January, we activated the shelter from January 9th through January 21st. It was the longest that we had been open. We started with six people, and we ended up with 32 people the last night. And that turns out to be an average of 20 people per night. It was primarily single males, but we did have a few females attend, and then also a father-daughter that came. What worked? The partnership between Harambe Catholic Community Services and the city, I think it's a really good partnership in that Harambe provides this space, and a volunteer that spends the night and helps coordinate some of the food. Catholic Community Services provides a staff person that is up awake all night, and does the initial screening and the sign-in, and handles any problems that might come up. The city's role is to market it, and to get the word out to the homeless, and to be there as a resource as well. This year, we put together a support team, sort of as a backup to the three partners. What we wanted to do was, in case food was needed, there'd be someone they could contact, or if they needed volunteers. And that worked out really well, because Luther's Table put out a Facebook request for volunteers, and for sleeping bags, and the community responded. In fact, the response was overwhelming. And we had a number of churches that provided food, as well as city staff, when it was activated. So it seemed to work really well. The one-night count of the homeless occurred in January as well. We had over 10 teams, and over 50 volunteers. We had the city spread in different geographic areas, and then teams counted the homeless in those areas. We had volunteers come from an array of places, as some of you know, because you participated in the one-night count. But they came from the community, Cupent Center, Vision House, the YWCA, Wayback Inn, the Renton Housing Authority, the Salvation Army, communities and schools, and then the city as well. So it was widespread support for this endeavor. As you know, it's done in the early morning hours, and sometimes it's cold and wet, and this year was a wet year. It was pretty rainy outside. The unsheltered count, I did a, to show you the count over the years, in Renton has increased from last year by 10 people. In King County, it has increased from 2012. What is next for Renton, given the severe weather shelter and the one-night count? What is, what are our priorities? We're working on the Reach Center of Hope for the homeless women and children. They recently picked up their building permit for the construction downstairs, and we'll be working with them on the construction schedule. Reach is also working on recruiting churches to house the women and children at night, and that's proceeding as planned. Reach is also looking at consolidating all the feeding programs that serve the homeless in Renton. Right now, we probably had five different locations that were serving meals, the different days of the week, and the thought was, if there was a central kitchen, it would be more convenient for the homeless, and also volunteers. We wouldn't be using the same volunteers to be going to all these different places to feed them. So Reach is starting to coordinate that effort, to do that. The last thing we're doing in the area homelessness is looking at restructuring the Arise program. The Arise is the rotating homeless men's shelter that moves every 30 days. The founding fathers of it are wonderful, but they're getting tired and they want to retire. And so it's almost impossible to find volunteers that are willing to be on-call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So we're looking at making it more broad-based in how churches and other community organizations can support that effort. So we've been working on that for a while. The 10-year plan to end homelessness has a couple priorities in it. One of the recommendations that just came out is the, to enhance the severe weather shelter by offering services in extended hours. If you recall, I mentioned that all we do is provide a roof overhead and a place to keep it safe. And the thought in, the recommendation is that if we could offer them counseling services or referrals to other services, that might be a point to engage them and to offer their services, and to get out of being homeless. The shelter also closes at 7:00 in the morning, and Luther's Table graciously allowed the people of the shelter to go there at 7:30 a.m., Monday through Friday, but nothing was open on the weekends till 9:00. And having a gap in time when it's really cold out is challenging. They typically will hang out on the street or go to Safeway, which isn't the best place. But the 10-year plan is recommending that the cold-weather shelters look at that gap. It's also difficult to open the shelter at 9:00 at night. People, that's pretty late, and to eat dinner, and if we could open it sooner. But oftentimes, it conflicts with the primary use of the facility, too, and you have to balance those things, the needs of the homeless with the needs of the facility. The other recommendation in the 10-year plan is to convert severe weather shelters to a winter shelter, be open all during the winter months, rather than just under those conditions where it's activated during severe cold weather. The 10-year plan also calls for increasing the resources and aligning services so that we can really engage the homeless, and provide access to services, and then look at getting them other housing. Lastly, the 10-year plan is working on improving the coordinated entry for families into the homeless system. Right now, you call 211, and there's a coordinated system to get in to shelter and housing for families. And that's new. That's in the last year where that's happened. And we actually have a caseworker that does that assessment, that's located up at the Renton Housing Authority. We're very lucky to have that person locally. The 10-year plan is also looking at how to better serve the homeless youth. The number of homeless youth are increasing, and there are not many services to meet their needs, and there's now a separate youth effort of the 10-year plan. The 10-year plan continues to look at increasing the number of affordable housing units. They've built quite a few, over 5,000 units, but the goal is over 10,000 units. The problem with being homeless is if you don't have any place to go to, that, then you remain homeless. The last thing is, the 10-year plan is looking at rapid rehousing for families. The federal government, and HUD, and King County are recognizing that not everyone needs the same level of service, and some families need a little bit of help, and other families need a lot of help, and that it's more cost-efficient if you provide the families a level of service that they need, versus everyone getting the same thing. So that's going to be an effort of the 10-year plan in the next year or so. So that's the end of my presentation on the severe weather shelter and the one-night count. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Karen. Council have any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you very much, Karen, appreciate it. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a report tonight.
Okay. Next is audience comment. We have a number of people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes, and the timer's next to the city clerk, so when you see the light turn yellow, you've only got a few seconds left. First is Beth Asher.
Hi, I'm Beth Asher, Renton resident. And of course, I'm here to speak on the library. We were told, you know, that you guys were tired of hearing about the library. However, we recently discovered to our chagrin that the input process we've been participating in was actually one-way. Goes in, doesn't get used, what is returned is basically spoon-fed information. We were recently presented with design by KCLS, and looking at it, it appears to be the same design they used in their $13 million letter, shrunken by a third, and it removes quite a bit of usable space for the public. Since this is such a diverse community, with a wide variety of needs, I just think this is inappropriate. This is a growing community. The library downtown is placed where there will be extreme density, since the mandate is to keep, you know, multifamily housing in density, where it already exists, and to revitalize downtown. So I'm thinking this library will not serve that type of growing entity if it's made smaller. We'll lose meeting space, literacy classrooms, all kinds of things that we could think of. We would prefer to keep the existing square footage, and we would prefer that KCLS present other options than the single option, which they have so far shown. And I also would urge the council, get up on its hind legs and stand up for the voters. Because in this particular instance, we're footing the bill twice. We're paying $5 million in property taxes to KCLS, and we're also paying for these libraries. And the voters have over and over expressed their wishes for this library. They're on the entrance on the river, they want a full usage of that space, even if it's meeting rooms, classrooms, whatever. I can think of many ways to use it. For example, services for resumes. You know, there's lots of people, lots of groups, that would volunteer down there and put services down if that space was made available. Once a space is gone, it's gone. And KCLS has a track record, you can check this very easily, of building a very small library, and then increasing its size with a remodel two or three times, again dipping into the public pocket. So we have a big facility. Why would we want to go that route? Just some things to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Richard Bray.
Good evening. My name is Richard Bray, I lived in the Renton Highlands for 21 years, and good evening, Mayor Law, and council members, and those of you who are viewing on TV. First, I want to say thank you for the financial support that we heard about tonight for the human services for programs like Arise. I commend the council for that support. My daughter tonight is serving at St. Anthony's Parish. The Arise program is being held there this month, and I'm very proud that she's doing that. My wife and two of my sons and myself have also helped out this month. It's a really tremendous program, and we're really impressed that the city supports that, and the men that we've met, some tremendous folks, including one veteran who's in his 60s. And if you came across him on the streets of Renton, you would not know he's homeless. And it's a real shame that he is homeless in our city. But I'm primarily here tonight to talk about the library here, and the plans for KCLS, for, the announced plans for it. You know, families like mine have enjoyed this library, and walking, and going across the river, entering the library with this beautiful magnificent view, you know, seeing the Sam, and we all know that, the beautiful wonder and the marvel of all the beautiful scenery that's there. And as most of us know, it is the most unique library experience anywhere. So why is this entrance in the new King County plan going to be taken away from us? Also, the KCLS plans for the Cedar River Library, all, excuse me, also reduces in size by 30%. Why is this good for our community? And why has it been such a hard, long struggle for us to keep this beloved gathering place in our community? In closing, I would like to ask each council member, our 76% of Renton residents who voted to keep our downtown Cedar River Library, and again, those of you who are watching on TV this evening and throughout the week, to recall the scene from the movie, The Lord of the Rings, The Two Towers, where Sam shares these words to a very discouraged Frodo at the very end. "It's like the great stories, Mr. Frodo, the ones that really mattered. Folks in those stories had lots of chances of turning back, only they didn't, because they were holding on to something. There is some good in this world, and it's worth fighting for." Our Cedar River Library over the water really does matter, and all the good and the beauty that happens there inside and outside is worth fighting for. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nick Samargus. I hope I didn't ruin your last name.
Hi, my name's Nick Samargus, I do live in Renton. I will be very, very brief, so I suggest you listen very, very closely. I saw the construction proposal at Tuesday night's meeting, and I would like to suggest that we see at least two additional proposals, one of which using all 22,000 square feet of space, as well as the main door remaining in its present location. And I would like you all to consider the following. When the new Issaquah Library was completed, it was already too small. If you walk in, it's just, they have one study room after all that construction. Is that going to happen here in Renton? At our current library, there's only one study room. At Bellevue's newer main library, they have between five and six study rooms. So my suggestions include the following. We postpone the end-of-the-month deadline for study of, so that we can study additional proposals, and allowing two to three Renton citizens to sit in with the library planners. Now, their meetings are public meetings, and they're supported with tax dollars, so I don't really see why they would object. And finally, the hard work and planning that was done more than 40 years ago by the city fathers of Renton, we ought to continue with that. They had a great idea, so we ought to plan wisely. I think all of this can be done, and stay reasonably close to budget projections. So once again, I would like to see additional construction proposals. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Karik Mainrender.
Good evening, Karik Mainrender, M-A-I-N-R-E-N-D-E-R. Lived in Renton for 26 years. And what KCLS is trying to do to us is an outrage. When we voted to stay where we are, over the river, we did not vote to have our library made smaller. We've already paid for it, we don't need for it to be cut up and sold back to us in a truncated form. We're one of the biggest cities in the state. I'm not sure just which number, but we're in the top 10. We're still growing. It makes absolutely no sense for us to have a smaller library when so many other places are getting bigger ones. So just refurbish the thing, stay in code, and you'll stay in budget. We don't need patios. We don't need to lose even one of our cherry trees. We need books, we need computers, we need meeting rooms, we need study spaces, and so on. And we need the door to stay where it belongs. So please, stand up to Potasik and his pack. Tell them to at least delay that presentation of theirs, and come up with some others. Tell them, they just can't come in here and ride roughshod over us. Tell them to start listening to us, and tell them, don't shrink our library. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicola Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor Law, council members. You've all been very busy, I'm sure, with budget issues lately, so I know that there's a lot going on for you all.
Excuse me, would you give your city of residence?
Oh, Renton. I just have a few areas of clarification, and regarding, those are the three. Number one, the public comments that have been going on for several months, provided during city-sponsored open houses, how is that information getting back to you, and is that being sent to you? Are you being informed of and fully aware of the monies paid out to KCLS to date? And lastly, and this, these are new, very recent, so whether or not you've seen these new design, the new design narrative, and preliminary plans submitted by KCLS in the recent pre-application meeting with city planners. So those are, that last point you make, that's relatively new. So do you have any responses to any of the questions?
Mr. Covington, do you want to, I mean, I can tell you, the council's been made completely aware of all the expenditures, and I'm sorry, what was your first question?
Public comments.
Public, yes, I made aware of public comments. The design, I'm not sure one council will be reviewing the actual design.
It's, we haven't set a definite schedule yet, because as the council's aware, whenever there's a development project, you go through a long process. What was presented to this group Monday night, or last Tuesday, was the results from a pre-application process. It is just that, it is before the application, so there has been nothing definite. But I will, so that, that's one question. So the public, first, one question, the public comments, we do forward those public comments on to KCLS at each of the meetings we have, so that they're aware of the comments that, from the Renton public, and they try to incorporate those into their plans. I will remind just everyone, the council certainly knows this, but everyone else, this is, as was mentioned, this is a 46-plus-year-old building. It was built before we had any of the regulations that we currently have now about working over the water. That has been a concern of ours from the beginning, and we've made that very clear. We've been very concerned. The building was also constructed 46-plus years ago, and so there've been a lot of new building codes, including the American for Disabilities Act requirements, that do force us to do things differently. That said, with the move to retain the building over the river, the city is committed to try to build the best, and most attractive, and functional library we can, in partnership with KCLS. We're going to do that within the money that we have. We only have a finite amount of funds that was already bonded for, and so we are working hard to do that. But we have regulate, the agencies have already told us, even this pre-app meeting, that they wanted less footprint over the water. And so we're trying to figure out how we can accommodate all the regulations, while we retain as much building as we can, and make it as functional as we can. And that's where we are right now. There have been no definitive plans, the council has yet to see the preliminary plans and comment on those. We are, in our effort to try to provide the public with as much information as soon as we can, we sometimes run into the situation we have now, where you have information, frankly, before the city council. But that's the, we're trying to remain true to the commitments we made when we agreed by the council's direction to try to provide this public forum. So there is time, it has not yet been scheduled. I think there's an open house, that the library is presenting the middle of next month, and probably after that time, we'll be, have enough information that we can then come back to the council, and have them review the plans that we have. But that's, that's where we are, Mr. Mayor. We're trying hard to build a great library. I will say that between this library and the Highlands Library, we're going to have 30,000 feet plus of new library facilities, along with a number of other libraries in the immediate adjacent area, so that residents of Renton will have access to more library services than they've ever had before. And we're excited about that. We're excited about the prospects of the new buildings that will be coming up, including this refurbished Cedar River Library. It'll be, I'm just confident it'll be a fantastic building. When it's finished, we'll retain as much of the original structure as we can, but we'll still have all the amenities of a 21st century library, and folks will be proud to have it in their community.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Covington.
Yeah, there was just, may I just ask for just one sentence that you, statement that you made about that you're being required to decrease the footprint of the library over the river? That's a very specific piece of information that...
I won't get into a lot of the details, but we have fish agencies and others who are concerned about predatory fish and shadows that create that. That bridge creates a shadow across the river, and so we've had a number of agencies that have told us that they are not happy with the idea that we would build, refurbish this building and retain the same size and shape of the bridge structure over the river. Whether they force us to make a change or not, we don't know. But that's, that's been the preliminary information we've received.
And we'll get, can we get access to documentation of that possibility?
Yes, KCLS will provide you with any documentation that you want.
Okay, regarding this particular issue?
Yes, they're handling all those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Paul Valet.
Hi, my name is Paul Valet. I live in Rolling Hills. Rolling Hills invented for over 40 years. As you call, I was here a couple of weeks ago, asking, talking about, I'm not going to talk about the library tonight, I'd like to discuss the smart meters, if that's okay with you. A subject that maybe some of the residents here know something about. I've been getting more and more information and communications than I ever thought I've ever received. I didn't realize I was starting something. But I appreciate the council putting on the agenda a utility committee meeting this afternoon. I did attend it, and I'm happy to see that at least two of your council members were present, and a lot of the staff. However, I was disappointed in the end result, because it was simply a report receiving, or rather, a report by the engineering department telling us that they had FCC approval for the radio communications of the system, okay? Well, we know the smart meters have been installed in Renton by the electrical and gas companies for PSC for some time. However, adverse effects of birds were not noted during all this time, for a couple of years. I must say that they are different from those installed by the water department. They are obviously less intrusive and lower power. Receivers are mounted nearby on light poles in the neighborhood for the electrical and gas meters. They tell us that they have to have a bigger battery, because they don't have electricity. Well, the gas meter doesn't have electricity either, okay? The, for the water system, they've included only a single receiver up on the water tower on top of Puget Drive. That covers the entire South Hill. Obviously, the signal has to be stronger. As an engineer, to me, that makes sense. That's why there's more impact, okay? The city should have researched this issue more closely before deciding to install the flex meter infrastructure system. I was told by the engineering department that all you needed to have a larger battery, since you have no power source, okay? Apparently, that's a different technology. It was said before that the city installed those to save manpower to read the meter manually. These were read every two months in the past. So why do we have... So why do we have smart meters to transmit four times a day? Is there another purpose here? You got to shut off my water? I'm not, I don't want to accuse the city of doing anything wrong. I really don't, okay? But I'm starting to wonder, why are we, why do we have research done by the people that recommended the system in the first place? The engineering department and the utilities department recommended the system. They're going to support it, obviously. All right, that's fine. But please, let's have some research done by other people, okay? If they need to be read in the quantity of usage, why must they be read during the day? Would it affect the environment during the day? Why not have it done at nighttime? Why not have it done once, once in a while? Why not shut them off for a couple of weeks and a couple of months and to see if the birds come back? I take exception to the city engineers' comments when asked by the media and others that these smart meters transmit on a frequency approved by the FCC. Correct, 900 megahertz, that's right. But that has nothing to do with it. It's the frequency and the strength of the signal that makes the difference. Birds navigate by RF transmission, okay? They have in their brains, you know, that's how they find their way. That's how they migrate from one place to another. Would you believe that I received a call from someone south of the Renton golf course? And he said, "I've never had so many birds before. I've had to feed my feeders three times more than I used to do." He says, "Your birds have all transmitted over here." But guess what? They're on a well system. They don't have your meters. Interesting, isn't it? Well, anyway, I'll close, but I would ask that the council give us something more than just a report, like this afternoon. At the end result, I asked, "What's the next step?" And I was told there isn't any. We've received the report. Now, there's no further action by the committee. Maybe it's not their function, I appreciate that. But the council has responsibility, however. There's 4,000 of these meters installed, and they're going to continue to install more and more for up to 18,000. I worry about this. I was surprised how many people have come back to me and told me that they're affected. Now they realize they don't have their birds. Thank you very much, please.
Thank you. Next, that's David Keyes. Sorry that people are interrupting David. You're up.
Let's see, reading this, my name's David Keyes. I'm a resident of Renton. My last name's K-E-Y-E-S. I'm here to speak about the library, but I will try to keep it simple. We realize, Mr. Covington, that the city just received news of this potential presentation from KCLS as well. That said, that presentation, and maybe it's two presentations, maybe it's one, I'm not sure, and I don't know what their actual request was, but I would definitely like to suggest that the council and certainly the people at home that watch these on the TV, consider the venue for that. What we were told, what had been suggested prior to last Tuesday was that a presentation be held down at the downtown library in their conference room. And if that's the case, it's a very limited space. There wouldn't be much space for the public to attend, and it's, since it's so walled off opaquely, it would be very hard to find out what was going on. I was told the next day that this meeting was going to be, or was hoped to be, a, the formal presentation of the design to the city council. And I don't know if that's finalized, I don't know if the 26th is finalized. But what I'd like to suggest is that when the presentation comes up, several things happen. One, it be held probably in this room, where it can be recorded, broadcast, and a large number of the public can attend, because a large number of the public are very concerned about this. That all of the drawings that are submitted to the council for review be available on the internet, on PDF files through the city, as soon as the city receives those for your review. And certainly that the schematic cost estimate that would be presumably submitted at the time of the design, excuse me, be actually submitted at the time of the design, and that you absolutely require that of KCLS. Two parts of the same issue. And as you talk about budget, certainly you're aware of that. We'd like to see those numbers at the same time we see what some people are going to consider pretty pictures. And I'm sure we'll talk more about this. That's what I'd like to bring up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Elaine Livinggood.
Hello, council and mayor, thank you. I'm Elaine Livinggood, L-I-V-E-N-G-O-O-D, and I'm a resident of Renton for like 35 years now. And my concerns are about the automatic meter reading, or otherwise known as AMR meters. And after seeing the article about what Mr. Lett has been going through in his neighborhood, I was very much concerned about it, so I did a little research too. And there's a lot to learn out there. For one thing, there's been problems with billing in a lot of areas. In Atlanta, Georgia, they've had enormous water bills sometimes when the thing hasn't worked right. The whole system has been haywire at times. And some people have had like $7,000 water bills. Anyway, that is my main concern, however, it's, as Mr. Lett has expressed it so well, I hate to see the birds leaving because that's a rather interesting phenomenon. And it's like the colony collapse syndrome that's been going on with the bees. I think they're also affected at these certain wavelengths and frequencies. But if there's an imbalance in nature, it's not good for people either. And the FCC has kind of given it a blanket approval, apparently, but there's a lot of testing that should be done. The World Health Organization has classed the radio frequency waves as a Class 2B carcinogen in a lot of cases, which puts them right in the same league with lead and DDT. And so it really should be seriously studied. There's a lot of people so upset in different cities where this has been put in already with the monitoring, that they've had to try for opt-out policies. And they've had either been approved in the state legislatures or mandated because of court order or pending in California, Connecticut, Florida, Georgia, Hawaii, Louisiana, Maine, Maryland, Michigan, Nevada, Oregon, Pennsylvania, Texas, and Vermont. Although I don't see what good it would do if you were the only person on your block to opt out and everyone else still had the waves going toward the tower. I've noticed that where I live on Talbot Hill, we're at about 200-foot elevation, and the water tower top is almost 600 feet high up there in Rolling Hills. It's like 593 feet or something. And that's probably a pretty darn strong signal to go that far. I just hope that you could reconsider this plan, and it's also going to cost almost $3 million for this setup, because so far I see the projected $1,200,000 to start off. It says 2012. And then $300,000 thereafter for the years of 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, and 2017. Bring it to a total of $2,700,000. So that's a considerable amount of money to spend if we could still get to your efficiency where we're not losing a lot of water and wasting water, which I know is the main concern, to have these things read more often. If we could do that with the three people that are still reading the meters that I know of, it sure saves a lot of money. Thank you for your concern and letting me talk.
Thank you. Mr. Covington? Half hour is up for audience comment. Did you want to continue or...
I'd like to continue with audience, I'd move to continue with audience comment.
Second. Okay, moved and second, we continue with the comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, okay. Pass this. Dana Rocher, I think. Good. Finally, got one right.
Hello, I'm Dana Rocher. I'm a resident of Renton, and thank you for having me here. I just want to say thank you to the city for allowing the meeting last Tuesday where we were informed on the library topics and what the latest developments were. Being a designer, I'm generally open to change. However, an old adage comes to mind, "Don't throw out the baby with the bathwater." And that's precisely what it seems like KCLS is doing. One of the most distressing elements is the moving of the entry. Originally designed as an elegant solution to unite the two halves of the city and encourage visitors from, to engage with the beloved Cedar River, and the new design turns us back on that vision. Metaphorically cutting off the north half of Renton and Liberty Park, we need to encourage connections, not destroy them. And I just, I'd like to see another design offered by KCLS other than the one that's been put forth so far. And maybe postpone the meeting so that that can happen, because I don't think they can really pull it off in a month. And I also want to say the smart meters, I don't know a whole lot about them, but I am very concerned. We still have our birds in Monterey Terrace. We don't have any smart meters yet, so I don't want to lose them. And thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paul Watt. Walt Watt.
Hello, I'm a resident of RIN since basically 1956, and I consider it a great honor to be able to speak to the mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, some of them that I even voted for. I like, I like our library, and also I enjoy the birds. But that's not what I'm here to talk about tonight. Tonight, I want to bring up the same old subject of fluoridation. From the time I was, I'm 72 years old now, and I remember back when I was 14 years old and the subject of fluoridation came up, and the big battle started. And I've never receded. Down through the years, I believed in fluoridation. I thought it was a good thing. When I see things like, after 60 years of research, and you see a lot of scientific evidence against it, a lot of the people that are supposedly for it, more or less are just saying they're for it, and I don't see that much scientific evidence for the reason why. When toothpaste companies that use fluoridation actually put out a warning that children under the age of six, if they swallow that toothpaste, it should raise a concern because of the fluoridation in it. That kind of sways my opinion a little bit. So I spent, oh hell, from 12 to 18 hours since this last meeting of the council on the internet doing a lot of research. I'm not a doctor and I'm not a scientist, but I've read a lot of information from both. All the way down to Kansas, the state from which I am from, all the way up to, I think it's Anchorage, Alaska, or Fairbanks. It was Fairbanks, Alaska, had quite an issue on it, pro and con. And I noticed also during my research that China, where we get this chemical from, I'm assuming we call it a chemical, they don't use it in their water, but they sell it to us. The major countries of Europe, they don't use fluoridation anymore. Why? This is something I would think that the council members would really be interested in to research themselves, and not take my word or one individual's word pro or con either way, but to actually do their own research. When it comes right down to it, if we're going to err one way or another, I would think we would want to err on the side of caution until it's proven extensively that this is a good thing. So with that, I'm thinking of the amount of money that, I don't know how much we're spending here in the city of Renton of the taxpayers' money every year to buy these chemicals from China. But I'm sure our budget is stretched, maybe not as bad as some of those cities that are going broke around the nation, but at least stretched quite thin. And I would think that that money that we're using for that, where we're waiting to find out more scientific evidence, would be better used for schoolteachers, police personnel, and firefighters. With that, I thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you. Next is, next is Jeanne Green Crook.
Hi, Mayor Law, Council persons. I'm Jeanne Green Crook. I'm a Renton resident for 33 years. I have a Renton business here, and I wish to express my concerns as to the development of our iconic over-the-river, one-of-a-kind library. I'm here to ask you all to please respect and support the wishes of 76% of the Renton citizens who came out and voted to save our beloved library. The residents of Renton and myself believed the new library, believed the new library was going to be modified, not demoed, and the current building with the entry would be somewhat the same, still at mid-span, to have equal access to both parking areas and Liberty Park and other venues in the area, meaning museums, fire department, and local businesses. And to shrink the library, 30% seem to me to be a big mistake. We have so many community services that are happening there, children's storytime, job sourcing, meeting rooms, and other KCLS-sponsored events. So I would like, so I would like the city council to act on behalf of the citizens and let KCLS know what we want. I want to follow up with an excerpt from author Norman Vincent Peale. This article is from January 1988, where he said, "Before there was Nike's swoosh and slogan, 'Do it,' with an exclamation point, he said, 'Do it,' and he proceeded with, 'Every day, each of us is offered opportunity to do just this, sometimes in large ways, sometimes in small, but often we let inertia or fear or selfishness stop us. We fail to do it. What we don't realize very often is that if we just take the first step in the right direction, God will support us in the rest of the journey. There is an old proverb with basic truths, 'Begin the thing, and ye shall have the power.' But those who do not begin have not the power." And so in summing this up or closing it, I, when they talked about making the library smaller, when it comes to King County, building another library or a library and building it over and over, Fairwood has been remodeled three times. And I don't know how big that library is, but I would be willing to bet you it's bigger than 16,000 square feet. We're pulling people not from just Renton for our library, but for all... We're pulling people not from just Renton for our library, but for all of this King County area that wanted to come and vote for our voting process. And they're watching us. They want to know what's going to happen, because they want that library the same way it is, as we all do. So, I guess in that, I'd like to say thank you for hearing me, and I appreciate all that you can do to help us.
Thank you. Next is Christine Frazier. Okay, next is Kathy Ozenkop, Ozenkop.
I'm Kathy Ozenkop, a 40-year-plus resident of Renton and user of the library and the library services. The library services are the one service in a city that is utilized by more citizens than any other service. And 76% of the voting public in Renton voted to keep this library at this location over the Cedar River. People are extremely interested in preserving this area and this location and in this library setting. I have attended all of the monthly Tuesday meetings, the open houses where citizens have been allowed to give input on the design of the Cedar River Library renovation. Last Tuesday, I was shocked to learn the Cedar River Library appears to be mostly demolished and rebuilt, reducing the footprint from 22,400 square feet to 16,000 square feet. I paid for the original bond issue on this building. I expected the city of Renton, through the routine taxpayer collection of my taxes, to fund the continued maintenance of this building. And now, here it is. I'm at the retirement age, and I'm being asked to pay for a totally demolished new building. Think about the impact on my taxes. Look at my tax statement since KCLS took over the management of the Renton library system. You folks have the duty of funding these services with your priorities on your budget. I am the person who has to pay the bill. I am a volunteer citizen, and you are the paid professionals managing the city, but I have spent many hours involved with this process of saving the library over the Cedar River for the citizens of Renton. I believe the citizen input at these Tuesday meetings has been totally ignored. And I have been told that all of our Tuesday meeting input has been properly given to the King County Library System management. And this was told at the meeting last night by one of the administrators here for the city. I also learned at the city meeting last night, to which Mr. Covington was not present, that Karen Walter, biologist, representative for the Muckleshoot Tribe, presented information at a pre-application meeting, and she said, apparently, no expansion of the current location was the feeling of the tribe. They did encourage increased light to the river. And of course, that would, the design of the building would allow additional light getting into the river. And they did discuss the prey, that prey upon the little fish that go and live, that transfer themselves down the river and out into the lake and live there in the lake for a year before they go out into the big waters of Puget Sound. So, yes, you know, we're concerned about keeping the salmon, but we're also in a unique position to continue the current building at its 22,400-square-foot area, and keeping the iconic entry of the building over the Cedar River where it remains. Every single meeting, every single Tuesday meeting since October, people have said, "Keep the library entrance where it is, keep the library the same size." And here we are with this shocker last night, or I'm sorry, this past week. So with that, I implore you to do your homework on this project with the King County Library System and stick up for citizens of Renton and their wishes in this, in this project. It impacts many of our families. It impacts many of our immigrant families, and impacts very many citizens, and it impacts students, and it impacts us all. And we want this library to be the best it can be, and we also implore you if there are funding issues.
I'm sorry, your five minutes is up.
Please look at them as well. Thank you. Additional funding issues.
Next is David Beeden.
My name is David Beeden. I'm a 30-year resident of Renton. My last name is spelled B-E-E-D-O-N. Basically, I'm going to echo what some other people have already commented on, and that's about the library. I'm very disappointed in the way this whole library process has been going. Basically because it seems like KCLS is just being arrogant and doesn't give a darn about what we say. I've heard tonight that all our concerns have been passed on to KCLS about library design, redesign, construction, and remodeling, or whatever, but I don't think it's enough just to pass those concerns on. KCLS seems determined to steamroll this community for whatever reasons, and I think it would be very helpful if the city would join its citizens who are expressing interest in defending those interests, not just passing them on. As to the proposed design that came up last week, I didn't attend the meeting. I've only heard about it and heard what people have said tonight. But a reduction of 30% in the floor space seems just ridiculous. I, I don't grasp it. As others have said, this is a growing city. Doesn't a growing city need a larger library presence, at least downtown? And the other issue that concerns me is the seemingly complete disregard by KCLS for our desire to retain the entrance to the library where it is, over the river. I don't understand it. If KCLS can provide a real good reason why all of our concerns should be thrown out the window, okay, I'll buy that. I haven't heard one yet. And I would like to support or second Mr. Keyes's suggestion concerning, well, three things. That a larger meeting room, preferably one with broadcasting or recording capability or both, be used for that presentation by KCLS to the city council or to the public or both. Holding it in a small meeting room in the downtown library just doesn't cut it. What it does do is limit the number of people who can attend and make comments, and also denies any kind of recording capability, as far as I know. That's just not acceptable. It's a public meeting, there's a lot of public interest in this, and it should be on the record. Additionally, at least one other proposal should be offered by KCLS. Are they going to just give this one and then maybe make some tweaks to it later? I don't know what, but it seems to me only fair that a body that's designing something for the city ought to come up with more than just one proposal, especially when, especially when so many people are dissatisfied with that one proposal. And the last thing I would like to second from Mr. Keyes is that whatever documentation is provided to the city in advance of that presentation, be made available to the public on the web, maybe there's other ways, but the web certainly seems to be a good way to do it. I appreciate what the council and the mayor have done so far, but I think maybe more could be done. So with that, I say thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Jeanne Keys.
Well, actually, it's Jeanne Keys.
Oh, sorry.
He says it wrong.
I apologize for that.
Oh goodness. Well, I didn't realize there are going to be things like fluoridation talked about and the birds and the bees, but at any rate, I, I know that when fluoridation came about, as I understand it, it is an industrial waste, an industrial toxic waste. And what they happened to do was figure out that, oh, it might help something in the dental industry, and so the dentist picked up on it, and we got to find a way to get rid of it. I don't know if we're buying it from China or anything about like fluoridation in my water either. Number two, the birds and the bees. If the bees go away, we die. That's all there is to it. There's no cross-pollination, there's no growth, there's nothing. And if the birds are going to go away to, they're responsible for planting a lot of things around here. So anyway, that's all about the bird and bees. On to the Cedar River Library. My question is, is if we had a Cedar River Library there for this many years, and codes have been brought up as far as wanting to build a new building, it hasn't fallen down yet. It's in good shape, and it would certainly be grandfathered in as far as the codes were concerned, if they wanted to, you know, fix up some certain things to make sure it wasn't going to fall down, or whatever you people were talking about, you know, you guys know what you're doing, I don't. But I think that, that we've got a building. We've got a big building. You don't want to spend a lot of money from, from what we've, what we're putting into the kitty from our property taxes, well, don't build another building. What's the matter with keeping the one we got? I mean, and people talk about moving the front door. What the heck does somebody want to move the front door for? I wouldn't move the front door in my house. I mean, you know, it doesn't even make any sense. Big deal, the front door. I like it where it is. You don't have to pay anything to, to walk through it, but if you move it over here, that means somebody got to pay to put it over there, and I got to walk in it over there. The door that's there is fine with me. Okay, okay, I, I heard that there was disposal of books. I saw photographs of a huge dumpster with a lot of books from the public library in it, and I thought, oh my gosh, what are they going to do with them? Well, I thought they disposed of them. I mean, garbage. These were not given out to people, they were not donated to anyone, they were thrown in the toxic waste. I mean, they were thrown in the, what do you call it?
Dumpster.
The recycle center, whatever, not even the recycle center. They were just dumped. They could have been donated to somebody, they could have been sold at a library sale, and we could have made some money off of them. And old newspapers, you can't get those back again. They're gone. And I don't know about you guys, but I'm all for keeping historical stuff. If you saw my house, you'd understand. At any rate, we should have donated them, done something like that, you know? There are a number of worthy recipients I know of, and there are veterans organizations, hey, we need books, we need stuff to read. There are homeless shelters, they need books there. There's all kinds of places. But I may sound very naive, and I apologize for that, but I came, I came on board because these people out here are really working hard for this, and I just wanted to support them. And so I got out the shoehorn and got myself out of my house tonight and came down to be with you all. I wouldn't do your job for anything, nothing. I want to be home with my husband. Anyway, I appreciate your time, and I say, like my mom used to say, "But ain't broke, don't fix it."
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Ms. Keys, I just have to say that I really do enjoy your spunk, your spirit, and your shirt also.
Well, I'm not really this mad.
Next is Shannon Torres.
My name is Shannon Torres, spelled T-O-R-R-E-S, and I just heard about the meters this morning and made it to the meeting this afternoon.
Excuse me, your city president?
With utilities, Renton.
Renton.
Oh, utilities. I live currently, since 1995, in South King County in Skyway. My, four of my five children have attended schools in Renton and done various different activities in your parks and have met in your libraries. Because of their school being a partnership program up in that area, they've gone to Fairwood for their study groups, and for the most part. But I enjoy your parks and your libraries due to the fact that in my area, we don't have very good stable, for my unstable ankles sidewalks. So I have done various activities around Liberty Park and Cedar River and at your library, and I support the library, and I think it would be a wonderful thing to have it rebuilt. And I do understand that, you know, things have to be changed because of building up codes and making it accessible to everybody, and I support that. I also did not even know anything about the fluoride. I mean, I know a lot about the fluoride, but I didn't know it was happening tonight. I have been on Facebook trying to get people to look at different things that I've researched about fluoride, and I think it would be wonderful if you saved your money and stopped putting it in the water. It is a toxic waste, and on the back of that tube, sir, it says, "If your child takes a size larger than a P, seek medical help immediately." That is toxic, and it is linked to various autoimmune diseases such as Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, and diabetes even. And we are sicker than we've ever been, our communities are having more illness than they've ever had. And on that, if, since there is a question, please err on the side of caution and take it out. There's even reel-to-reel on YouTube showing a 1960 film of the effects of fluoride on a community near a rendering, or what is that, a processing plant for the, for the waste, for the toxic waste, and what it did to them if you can, you know, research on your own. But I am here because of the meters, and I am a gardener, and I, at the time, at this point, I don't have a garden. I, I help elderly people, some neighbors of mine, to garden, and I am knowing that we have had a decrease in pollination and yield. And I have been gardening for 17 years in this area, and with the gas meters having those, the super, the smart meters, I didn't know anything about that, and I kind of wonder about that. I know they are lower, lower voltage or whatever it is, or ampage or whatever, because they have, they do, they, they only have to report to the water tower. They don't have to go over into downtown, you know, Seattle or wherever your utilities is located, your main place. But I live right, due to circumstances, being hard in my family, I have moved to housing where there's multiple, there's 24 apartments where I live, and if you go to smart meters, probably my, my utility company, Seattle Public Light, is, will consider it. And I don't want that, because I sleep 14 feet, 12 to 14 feet away from 24 of those meters transmitting. If they transmit, they have to take turns to transmit, it is going to be detrimental. My neighbors' children are even closer than I am to those meters. You haven't even taken into consideration your apartments and what this is going to do. I know it sounds so smart to, you know, be able to cut off the electricity or the gas, you know. you know, or, you know, water, whatever it is, and have it done like that, and immediately when a person says, I'm moving. But I, I don't know, there's, maybe smaller, small, if they could not, you know, put the rest of those in. Already, what is it, 4,050 of them have been put in. And I'm very concerned, and I hope that Renton does the right thing for all three of these issues. And because as you go, your neighbor, your other communities around Newcastle, all these other areas are going to be, you can, you know, stand up for the right thing.
I'm sorry, your five minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Covington, did you feel the need to have to update anything on fluoride?
Well, I'll just remind the listening audience and those who might be listening in on television, we appreciate everyone's concerns over fluoride. It's, I think, one of the nice things about living in this community is people do feel strongly about a number of issues. I'll just reiterate what we said last week. We rely on those agencies and scientists, PhDs, doctors, those folks whose job is to protect the public. And they have, as people have alluded to, there's been a number of studies, people continue to debate the benefits of fluoride in drinking water. We're relying on national, state, and local public health agencies to be the experts to tell us whether or not the way in which we provide fluoride into our water is safe. And that is what we're doing. So it concerns me always when people talk about us putting toxic materials into our water supply. That is simply not the case. We provide safe drinking water. As I said last week, there will always be exceptions. Those people who have allergies or medical conditions may have to treat the water in a way that is safe for them, but for the general population, this is safe water and it's safe to drink. And those public health agencies tell us that fluoride is safe in the quantities that we're applying it to our water supply.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
Yeah, the library, we obviously had many speakers on the library, many speakers on lots of subjects tonight. Some of those subjects, we as a council are going to have to spend some time digging into. The library's one where I would really like to see KCLS step up to the plate on resolving this issue. We have been, as was mentioned tonight, we're giving them $5 million a year, we're like three years into our relationship with them. I think they do have a responsibility to this community to come up with a design that's acceptable to this community. Perhaps they are worried about funding, perhaps they're worried about ADA, but I would like to know what it would take to build the library that would satisfy this community. I'd love to have the community coming into the council chambers and going, you know, we're really behind this design, and we think you guys should find the $800,000 more required, or something like that. I mean, we want to rebuild our downtown, we've got a lot of interest, I think we just need to know what it would take. And then we can decide whether we need public-private partnerships to get there or whatever. So if they think that there's elements that they can't accomplish with the existing library, let's find out how they can accomplish them and put the entry where everybody wants the entry to be. And let's ask KCLS to do the heavy lifting on that. I don't want to design the library in here. I mean, I think, I agree with the comment by many of the citizens that ultimately, because we're in a funding role, we have a responsibility. But I think the way we should exercise that responsibility is to just tell KCLS that we want to see people in here talking about how great the new design is. I don't want to just hear everybody saying that they don't like it. So if we could just, if we could just tell KCLS that, you know, maybe they want to tell us what this proposal is that moves the entry, but I want to also know what it would take to build the library that the people that have made all these comments are asking for. And if there's a funding deficit, we should at least just discuss what, you know, what the options would be for that. So.
Mr. Mayor. Well, I agree with a lot of what you've said, Randy, and I'm going to take it the other way. That the feedback that I'm getting overwhelmingly is, the people would rather have the library be left alone than have anything done with it, like what they're talking. I was extremely disappointed to see the Tuesday night plans. And I was surprised because these dedicated people have been so faithful and going and giving input, and it doesn't look to me like KCLS has done anything. I certainly wouldn't approve what I've seen. And I think I'd like to see just the bare minimum. We have been told that the electrical, we know the restrooms need upgrading. I go the opposite way from you. What's the minimum? People want to keep the library, the Cedar River Library. They're not asking for a brand-new library. They're asking to keep the treasure that they've worked so hard for. So I would like to see at least one more proposal. I find what was presented totally unacceptable, and I have no problem letting the KCLS board directors know that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I guess it's time for me to weigh in here. I think that it's pretty clear that the overwhelming majority of people who have spoken throughout this process are not happy, you know, with the direction that we're currently going in. And I'd be inclined to agree with some of what Randy said in terms of wanting to see what it would take to get our community behind this project. It's pretty simple. It's not very complicated to me. I mean, it's, first and foremost, you know, we've got a footprint there that is large enough that we can, you know, if we keep it the size that it is, you know, we can, we can, we can, we'll obviously use the space over time. So shrinking it down, scaling it back, only eviscerates that footprint. The other thing is that, you know, we're talking about our residents who are paying for it. I think they ought to be able to have a say in what we do to it. And I think that that calls for more involvement to some degree. I don't, and I respectfully appreciate Marcy's comments, but I, when I voted to annex into KCLS, it was because I recognized, based on the master plan that came back, that clearly indicated that our library technology, the system, just didn't provide the level of services that, you know, would take care of our community for the next 25-plus years. And with the community as diverse as ours is, it's growing, it's got all of the needs, we need, we need that technology. We need a larger library. But, you know, I don't think that we need to see KCLS present a proposal in such a way that justifies scaling it back in order to build it the way that they would like to see it built. I think that we can get all of that square footage on that footprint, and I think that we can do it within the budget we've got, and I'd even stretch my neck out a little bit there and say, yeah, if it costs a little bit more money, that if the community was willing to get behind it and justify that additional expenditure, I could go along with that also.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. So, I was just going to say, we'll pass along your comments to KCLS.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Corbin.
Just for interest's sake, just to hit the trifecta of issues, I thought you might be interested in knowing that, you know, I have a reverse osmosis filter that removes fluoride. And Ethno Figur, I thought it was interesting that I got a note from our Utilities Department that the smart meter picked up the fact that my, that it's a perpetual water use to do the reverse osmosis, and I got sent a note saying that I potentially should look for a leak. So I thought that was interesting. And actually, you know, to be fair to the Utilities Department, I thought it was neat that they could pick that up, that, so basically, that would mean that if I'd had a hose bib trickling steadily all night long, that it would have picked that up. But I thought it was funny that it picked up my reverse osmosis water filter, and it just sort of brings all the issues together in one night here.
Mr. Mayor.
Ethno's brother.
If I need to comment on the birds issue, we have, I couldn't even tell you, we have flocks of birds in our yard. And I also have the smart meter in. So, you know, I'm not sure if it's a different location in the city, but our bird feeders, they're going like crazy right now, so.
Well, that's as scientific as we've had for anything. I think that'll be good. Okay, council, we're moving on to the consent agenda. We have 11 items for your consideration. Is there anything a council member would like pulled for discussion?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I move that consent agenda be approved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corbin, that council approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving to unfinished business, Mr. Corbin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Brier.
Yes, Finance Committee has three committee reports. Finance Committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on February 25, 2013, claim vouchers 318-698 through 319-046, three wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $4,144,091.50. And payroll vouchers include 723 direct deposits and 55 payroll checks totaling $1,531,774.17. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Brier, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee report, increase police patrol vehicles. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve increasing the number of vehicles assigned to the Patrol Operations Division of the Police Department by one, to allow assigning two officers per car and to provide for a spare patrol vehicle pool with five retired vehicles. The combined total impact to the budget will be $45,000 one time, funded by carry-forward budget amendment and 30 budget adjustment, and $33,000 annual ongoing cost, $11,000 for replacement reserve, $12,000 for maintenance and operations of one frontline vehicle, $10,000 for the maintenance and operations of five backup vehicles, which will be accommodated within the department's budget. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Brier, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee report, 2012 Community Forestry Assistant Grant. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a 2012 Urban Forestry Restoration Grant Project with the Washington State Department of Natural Resources in order to conduct the May Creek Trail Restoration. The recommendation to perform the May Creek Restoration Project is consistent with the Urban and Community Forestry Development Plan that was approved by City Council on July 20, 2009. The city's share of the grant includes providing additional supplies and equipment, post-news releases, develop and implement a three-year maintenance plan, monitor the results, and report to the DNR annually. The project will provide free labor using the Washington Conservation Corps crews valued at approximately $15,000 for removing invasive plants. Planting the area will be accomplished by volunteers at Renton's 8th Annual Arbor Day, Earth Day celebration on Saturday, April 27, 2013. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I move that council concur with this committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Brier, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to Mr. Prince.
Utilities Committee has committee report.
Utilities Committee report, amended and restated solid waste interlocal agreement with King County. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the amended and restated solid waste interlocal agreement between King County and cities to extend the solid waste interlocal agreement of 1988 from June 2028 to December 2040, and provide additional liability protection for the city. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Taylor, that council concur with the Utilities Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Utilities Committee report, agreement for emergency sale of water to Coal Creek Utility District. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the agreement for emergency sale of water with the Coal Creek Utility District, establishing the terms for determining availability and quantity of surplus water for sale to the district in case of an emergency. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Taylor, that council concur with the Utilities Committee report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person.
No new business.
Okay, Ms. Palmer.
Full business.
I'm supposed to have a report, but we don't have it. It's the operating and permit agreement with ProFlight that we signed, and I don't have, do you have a copy of it, Bonnie?
No, I do not.
Okay. I guess we'll do it next week.
So we'll hear that next week, okay?
I don't think there's anything time-sensitive on that. So that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have six resolutions this evening.
The first resolution regards the Benson Hill Community's sales tax credit. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the City of Renton to impose a sales and use tax as authorized by RCW 8214-415 as a credit against state sales and use tax relating to annexations.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corbin, second by Ms. Brier, to that council adopt the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Next resolution is the interlocal agreement for the donated passenger van. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with King County regarding donation of a passenger van.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corbin, second by Ms. Brier, that council adopt this resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution is also an interlocal agreement, this with Valley Medical Center for firefighter medical services. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with Public Hospital District Number One of King County, DBA Valley Medical Center, occupation health services.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
I move adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corbin, second by Ms. Brier, that council adopt this resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution regards the 2012 Urban Forestry Grant Agreement. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Washington State Department of Natural Resources entitled Interagency Agreement with the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I move that council concur with this resolution. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Brier, second by Ms. Palmer, that council adopt this resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution regards the solid waste agreement. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with King County entitled amended and restated solid waste interlocal agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, and second by Ms. Brier, that this resolution be adopted as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the last resolution is an interlocal agreement with Coal Creek Utility District for water. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with Coal Creek Utility District for the sale of water during an emergency.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
Move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Bonnie. Moving on to new business, Mr. Corbin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a few announcements.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a few announcements. Um, the first one is that the council is about to have its annual retreat or off-site planning meeting, if you will. It's two days, a lot of part of this week, Thursday and Friday, February 28th and March 1st. And that will run, um, it's, it's open to the public. Um, the, the meeting is 8:00 AM till 1:30 PM on Thursday, February 28th. And it's at Merrill Gardens at Renton Center, 104th Burnett Avenue South. And there's, um, four items on the agenda. Renton's economic development priorities, impacts, implications of comprehensive plan policies, Renton's changing demographics, and emerging public safety issues. And then, um, that will carry over to Friday, March 1st, uh, same location, Merrill Gardens. And, um, we're adding three additional items to the agenda. So basically, any items we didn't finish on Thursday will carry through to Friday, plus we're adding sustainability of services, including economic forecast, CIP prioritization discussion, and miscellaneous issues and updates. And, um, then I also wanted to announce a committee of the whole meeting, um, uh, in the seventh floor conference room on March 4th, Monday. Um, and, uh, that will be 6 o'clock PM to 7 o'clock PM. And there's one item on that agenda, it's regional and emerging issues. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Um, nothing to report, but I would like to just mention that I had the honor in honor of Black History Month, which February has been. I had the opportunity to participate in an event that was done by an organization called DC Productions, and it was their second annual Black History Month celebration held at Joint Base Lewis McCord. A wonderful event for about a hundred of our soldiers, officers. Um, it was a festive event, food, dance, music, performances by Renton's own Iriam Sisters. Uh, Dr. Maxine Mims, a well-known activist, was the keynote speaker. And, uh, I also had the opportunity of meeting a, uh, a chief from Ghana who gave me some insight on, um, how chiefs are selected and what their duties are. And it was quite interesting, very educational. Uh, the event featured a fashion show, had poems read by youth and kids. It was just a wonderful event. And the real neat thing about it was that it was done for our soldiers. And, uh, and it was, uh, Joint Base Lewis McCord had, uh, co-opted with this organization to put this event on for the soldiers. So, I was very delighted to be there in honor of Black History Month. That is all. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Uh, Ms. Breyer?
Uh, yes, um, the Finance Committee is gonna meet on Monday, March 4th, um, at 3:30 PM. We have three items on our agenda. Um, vouchers, public defense services contract addendum, and online utility billing briefing, uh, or an update, which is a briefing.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee will meet on Monday, March 4th at 5:00 PM in the council conference room. We have two topics, measuring availability, availability and reliability of fire station response apparatuses. And it's a briefing, only there'll be no report. And, uh, the second topic is emerging issues in public safety.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Transportation Aviation Committee, uh, normally scheduled for this Thursday, February 28th, is canceled. And I'd like to refer into the Transportation Committee, the airport leasing policies, specifically adding, uh, verbiage to it regarding tenants in good standing.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, second by Mr. Person, to, uh, refer to the Transportation Aviation Committee, airport leasing policies, particularly about tenants and their current standing.
In good standing.
Okay, in good standing. Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
And then, oh, sorry. Um, I just wanted to say that I was at the Salvation Army Advisory Board this morning. Um, and although we hear in the media that the economy is getting a little bit better, um, right here in our community, uh, the Salvation Army and the Food Bank are seeing more people. But I think the last two weeks, they've had record days. Um, like 173 new people on Wednesday. It's, it's just stunning. So, I just wanted to bring that up. Um, they can always use food donations, monetary donations, because their money goes a whole lot further than ours. And then, something that I saw late this afternoon, they need plastic bags. Desperately need plastic bags for people to be able to carry. They have so many people, they, there was a waiting line, there had been waiting lines of up to an hour and a half. Um, so they've gone to just putting the staples in a box, they prepackage those, and then the people then get to select the other things, to cut it down to about a half-hour wait time. So, I just want to bring out, there's still great need, um, in the community. And that's it, Mr. Covington.
Thanks, Mr. Taylor. Before-
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to make, for the record, just to, to clarify, I'm not sure council president, Corman, mentioned it, but Friday's meeting will be from, uh, scheduled from 8:00 to 5:00.
Thank you, Mr. Covington, yeah.
Okay. Also, let me mention for, um, council members, Wicker, that the Planning and Development Committee meeting that's normally scheduled for this Thursday, the 28th, at 3:00, has been canceled. So, moving on, um, to audience comment, is there anybody who didn't have a chance to address the council before? Please come up and give your name for the record.
Phyllis Forrester, Renton. I just want to reiterate that KCLS is a tax-driven agency, and they do have to be responsive to the people that support them. And I'm not seeing that. They are not being responsive, responsive. And, Mr. Covington, I read the report that was given to us by Terry and Peter and at these Tuesday meetings that we have, uh, so we thought we were giving input. And the report says, on the footprint that's called by the library, it's not a problem. What is a problem are city lights, things like that, that are along the bridges and what have you. But the, so I'm really tired of hearing that this library has a footprint problem, has for a long time, because according to that report, it hasn't. Um, and the ILA arrangement with KCLS, when we voted to keep our library across the river, that should have been redone. And I think it can still be redone to reflect the fact that we want it remodeled, not destroyed. And I think that there's still a chance to remodel it, as you said, Mr. Corman, because they're, what they're doing is just getting a bigger hammer. And this does not make any sense. So, it's 46 years old, I'm a lot older than that, so, and I don't have to be rebuilt right now, I am, by piece, by piece, but, uh, I guess I've got a new knee. And, um, I'm, I'm disappointed that you don't have the same information that we were given, uh, at these Tuesday meetings. Because if you, if you did know what we're talking about here, they, we've gotten a lot of really good information from those people, and they're your people. So, that, I'm very disappointed that you didn't get the same packet of information. You don't have to do a public disclosure with me to get it, I'll give it to you. Because, uh, I've got it. And I do have that report. So, I do think that, um, KCLS needs to listen. And I'm glad that you're listening. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I understand where Ms., Ms. Forrester would be coming from, asking about why we don't have the information. And it's a fair question. And I just wanted to clarify that, um, maybe there's, you know, the Pollyanna in me or whatever, but we were hoping that, uh, that KCLS would work with the citizens and develop a proposal that was mutually acceptable, then bring it to the council for, for final approval. And so, to some extent, we had done a little bit of a, of a handoff in the hopes that that would happen. And then, with the latest round, clearly, I mean, you, you don't-
Not even close.
Yeah, it's, that's obvious, so, um, so that's, that's where I want, I, I, I want to reiterate to KCLS that it, it's my expectation that, uh, they're obviously gonna have to change the way they're looking at this, because I, we still need to achieve that. We still need for the citizens to be happy with the proposal. And, um, and I can promise you that I, that I will be looking at the design. And I can actually already ascertain from the comments I've received, I received a lot of emails and everything from everybody with the description of it. But, um, but that, that was the reason that, that we, that you heard it before us, was KCLS was, um, presumably working with you to develop a design that was acceptable.
Well, we were just shocked Tuesday night. It was like we had just been spitting in the wind, you know? It was coming right back on us, and it wasn't going over to KCLS. I don't mean to spit on them, but I mean, that they need to hear what we're saying. And they, they don't care. And you can be Wallyanna.
Wallyanna, thank you.
Mr. Person?
Well, Mr. Mayor, several people have talked about demolishing, destroying, uh, the library building. And, and this council has never discussed anything but a full remodel, the remodeling of the building. So, I don't know where the demolishing and-
18, 26, I thought it.
Did you say nothing?
Yeah, it's on the level of the floor.
The-
Not the floor, the stuff floor.
Okay, please, please.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, if you were-
Go ahead, Mr. Person.
I mean, I don't want it demolished either, any more than anybody else does. The remodel, to me, is different than-
Than what they proposed.
Than what, and, and we haven't seen that. And, and I think there's a good explanation, because we're working through the process. And the process, it will get to us, but I'm sure that after this meeting, that King County will hear about it.
Thank you.
Okay, now, there are a couple people that haven't had a chance to address the council. You can come forward here and give your name and city of residence for the record.
Oh, they can all go ahead of me. I just wanted to remind the council that we had a very lengthy free speech discussion, and I don't want you to-
Beth, you can't, you can't speak there, you need to be at the podium. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Sandra Starwick, and I'm actually a visitor to Renton, I live in Kirkland. But I'm very interested in the wireless issue, and so my friends and I drove down just to hear what you were, uh, what you're doing, and just to listen to people's statements. And I was, just wanted to comment, actually, something that I came across on the internet the other day. Um, originally, I'm from Canada, and so then I'm also kind of tracking what's going on in Canada. And, um, I noticed that Health Canada, I'm just gonna read from this information, Health Canada actually admits that what they call their Safety Code Six guidelines for microwave radiation is based only on thermal effects, which is really interesting, because what, what I'm saying this is, I wanna, I wanna ask you to look more deeply into this whole wireless issue, because we, we kind of believe that it's covered, that we've got it covered, that we're protected. But now, slowly around the world, people are realizing that actually there are, is a lot more risk, and there's a lot more danger to life than we were, than we initially believed. And it's covering the whole spectrum of cellphone radiation, Wi-Fi radiation, anything that's wireless, your cordless phone radiation. And it's affecting nature, and it's affecting human bodies, and it's, it's, and there's a lot of illnesses that are surfacing that people attribute to wireless radiation, cancer, leukemia, brain tumors, et cetera, this long list. And so then, what we found interesting is that in Canada, they're actually coming, they're coming forward, and they're saying, uh, well, actually, we, we're not really, uh, we're not really basing our guidelines on the effects of this radiation, the, on the frequency of it, they're only, they're only basing it on whether or not it heats you. And so the heating is actually not the problem, it's the frequency of the radiation, and it's the irregularity of the nature of the radiation. And so then, I just wanted to say, as a visitor, thank you so much for hosting this issue, and, and it's a really important issue, and I urge you to look more into it.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Nancy Carlisle. I've, did my math, I've been living in, uh, close to Renton for 35 years, lived in my house for 26 years. I live in, uh, Parkwood South. I shake a little bit because I have Parkinson's. Um, but, um, the, um, for the meters, the smart meters, this is not just a concern, everybody's dismissing it as, as the birds are affected. But, you know, I've lived in my house, and I've had the enjoyment of seeing the gophers eat up my yard, and raccoons on top of my roof, and deer down my street, and, uh, the flicker putting holes in my, my, the side of my house. And all that is gone. All that is gone. And so, a bird is like the miner, had the canary in the, in the mine to make sure that the methane didn't get so thick that it killed people. Well, I think this is our canary in the mine. These are finches, small birds. We've never had to refill our feeder all winter. And that's unusual. The flicker came and pecked up my, my house once, and then he flew away. Why is that? That's very unusual. And, um, and one of the things is, is that in two minutes, I got this information, um, off the internet, and it's, uh, from an organization that was started in 1965. And, um, and it doesn't sound like it's bought and sold by anybody. I can't trust the FCC. Why could that be? Because maybe now there's only five owners of all the radio stations in the world, I mean, in our country. Uh, you can't, you can't base it on federal, you have to go to these independent, these, these people that don't get rich, uh, and find out what they're, and, and this is very, this report isn't, isn't all that conclusive. It says it needs more study. But I think these birds are giving us a fair warning. And if we could just shut it down for a couple months, since this is nesting time, then we could find out whether it is a cause. I mean, I should be happy the gophers aren't digging up my yard, right? And I should be happy the flicker's not putting holes in my, in my house, and I have to patch it up with wood. Uh, you know, I should be happy that the raccoons that carry diseases aren't sleeping on top of my, my daughter's roof. But, uh, I can't be happy, because if there's no life around my house, then why am I there? Why, why am I living? So, uh, I would like to present what will-
Can you give that to the city clerk?
Uh, picked up, and on the bottom is the website where I received it. And so, I, I'm hoping that you consider it, that these are the canaries in the coal mine. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Um, so many people have spoken to this, and I, I don't want to leave them wondering whether we're even listening or not. And frankly, I don't know, you know, where the city can go with this issue. Uh, we've got all the other issues we've been talking about, but, um, but I do want people to know that, that I, I'm intrigued. Um, I've, I'll, I'll say this, I've, I've wondered about electromagnetic radiation for a long time. Um, when I first moved into my house, I live on a ridge in Renton Highlands, and it used to be, I've got five children, and it used to be, I'd get them one of those remote-controlled toys for Christmas. And before I could grab the remote, the car would start driving everywhere by itself. And so I knew that there is a lot of radio waves bombarding our, our home up on the hill. Um, I once had a wireless alarm system that set itself off every night, and so, you know, we had to scrap that. Um, and then, but, but through the years, as I've been on council, I remember when we had talk about the, um, uh, the cellular telephone antennas, a lot of concerns, concerns about, um, high, uh, uh, high-voltage power lines, um, and, and all those things. I've, I've always worried a little bit about the radiation and the effects and the unknowns. Um, in general, it's, you know, there's, it, it's not conclusive. Um, I, I'll tell you this, we've actually had an electrical engineer out to our house that specializes in, in the RF radiation, and, uh, that particular engineer who's a specialist in this, that even has people use special curtains and stuff if they have sensitivities, did interestingly conclude that, that the room in our house that has the most, um, wires running through the walls, where, which basically where the breaker panel is, and it's got the distribution boxes, the one with the highest magnetic field. Um, the others are actually not that affected, but, but then we've seen cellphones introduced, we used to all have pagers. And so, you know, I, I thought that this radiation's everywhere. Um, when we did the smart meters, uh, four pings a day, uh, in my view, that was just one more thing, but way in the background compared to, you know, cellphone towers that are outside, people- but way in the background compared to, you know, cellphone towers that are outside people's homes, and cell phones that you hold right at your head for hours a day, not to mention even the cordless phones that we've used forever. So, you know, it's part of me that's, that's skeptic, I'll just admit, that's skeptical about whether this, this pinging smart meter really adds to that, that big electromagnetic mess that society's already created or not. And, and on the positive side, the smart meters were intended to get rid of trucks driving around the neighborhoods and, and creating more pollution as meter readers get out. So, having said all that, this, this issue is just about a week old for me and my colleagues on the council, and I'm still processing it. But I wanted people to know that I wasn't just ignoring it. I'm, I'm intrigued. I don't, I haven't had time to really study it the way I'd like, so I can see there's yet another, if, if you need to stand in line to ask your question, please go ahead.
You can't, you can't?
Yeah. Yeah, if, if, you can ask, I, please feel free to ask a question, but you need to stand in line. We'll try and get through the final audience members quickly so that you have a chance. Sorry about that. You can email me the question.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Green Crook. I talked a minute ago about the library. I want you to know I'm very passionate about Renton. I'm a Renton resident for 33 years, as I said. I am adamant about the fluoride. I have a compromised thyroid, and when you brought up that you have an osmosis filter system, I'm wondering, because Jay said that mostly people are not affected from the fluoride, but what about the ones that are affected? Could they possibly come up with a public grant that we could afford to put in a, reverse osmosis? I mean, I, I physically am challenged because of that. So, yeah, for most, it is okay, but not for me, and not for a lot of my family and friends. And as far as the, the smart meters, we are having them supposedly be installed this summer, and I'd like to see some more, more investigation before they proceed any further. So I just wanted that to be heard, and thank you for your time.
Dana Rocher, again. I didn't bring this up last time because I felt like kind of getting a nutter here by bringing up all these issues that are bothering me around Renton, but I love Renton, I just want to say that, because you do a lot of great things with community, and it's, it's awesome. But I would like to say, on the fluoride issue, test it at least, please. China has put out so many very poor quality products over the years, I mean, from computers and smartphones, and the melamine in the baby food, the dog food, it's, I mean, it's just such a little thing. If you're not going to pull it out, which I'd prefer happened, just test it randomly for public health. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. And I actually might, was, was going to say something that would surprise you. I was so pleased to see all the people coming forward with their concerns, and the council being willing to listen, and Dennis, I wasn't gonna, I wasn't going to get up here to bash, I was going to say, this is great. This is why the council needs to work. It needs to be input and output. It needs to be a two-way process. And, you know, I was so excited that people come and talk on new issues where before we hardly saw anyone in council. This is a great thing, and it's kind of, I don't know, maybe a new thing, because over time, it's been slowly growing. And I was excited that you particularly invited people who hadn't spoken yet, because that encourages them, maybe they've been listening and they've got something to say, right? And they've been afraid to speak, but now they will come forward. But I did want to caution against setting a precedent of only those who haven't spoken could come forward. So I just wanted to point out that we did go through that lengthy free speech thing where everyone can come up again. But it was great to hear. Come on up, give us your concerns if you haven't spoken before, if you thought of something, if something just, you know, leaped into your head that's a brilliant idea, we'd love to hear it, bring it up. That's the way it should work. That's the way it should work between the council and the residents. It should not be adversarial. And I would also like to ask for a timeline, since we've given input, and you've said you'll take it to KCLS, we would like output, and I would like a date and time for the output, so that we know what their response was.
Well, that's not possible, since we don't control KCLS and when they respond to us.
So, you will email them, you will not call, or...
We'll contact KCLS and share the comments from the city council to them, and get answers to them as quickly as we can.
Okay, and then when the answers come, will they be posted on the library update in, on the website, or...
It will be, these will be, this will be shared with the city council.
Only with the council, not with the residents?
Yes. The, the issues that they have raised will be discussed with the council. They choose to bring it to a public forum, that's where it'll appear.
Okay.
I'm Dave Beeden. I forgot something when I was up here earlier, and that is, there's a lot of concern about reducing the floor space or square footage of the existing library building. And I also heard that, I think from Mr. Covington, that there's been some request or concern from some government agencies about there being too much floor space, or that there should be a reduced amount to decrease the amount of shade for fish, or whatever. So, here's an idea. If the floor space over the river has to be decreased for whatever reason, why not extend the library onto the ground next to the river? That's all. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paul. Just a quick comment on the library issue, if I can, please. As a retired project engineer, construction manager, I'm very concerned about project budgets and how they are broken out. I have requested from Mr. Peter Renner, and he promised me that tomorrow he's meeting with Greg, and he will going to provide a breakdown of the program budget versus the construction budget. My concern is that they've come back and said, we only have $5 million to build a construction, that's a construction budget. That leaves 4.1 or some odd number. I'd like to see a breakdown of that, and I would propose that you, as council members, also would be very interested in seeing the details of that breakdown, how they come up with that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bernadette Wheeler. I also live in Kirkland, but I'm very concerned about this smart meters, and I did happen to bring with me something today which I can share with you. It's a compilation of some of the research that shows where smart meters range in terms of safety, and I'd like to give that to you, and I, it does have more detail behind in terms of who the research organizations are. There's some concern where, where like cell phones are at a .00000, too many zeros for me to count, megawatts per centimeter squared, but then you go down where you start to have sleep disorders, which is very close after where your cellphone is. And then there's what keeps moving on to where there's a scientific organization in Germany that says this is where they're concerned for people's public safety, and that is at .1. And then you keep going, and then you've got decreased cell growth, children have impaired motor problems at .3, and then, I gotta take off my glasses because I can't read with these. And then you have microwave hearing buzzing in your ears, interference to medical devices at a level of 2.4, breakdown of the blood-brain barrier, which is where you really start to have medical problems, and that is at 2.5. Children at a four-point level with lower memory function and visual reaction time. Then you have leukemia at 5.1. Itron smart meter, which is what PG&E is using for the gas meters, is 7.93. For the SIRIT multi, multi-protocol reader, which is proposed on the I-90 bridge, that is 8.75. And then if you, to address the concern somebody brought up of an apartment building where they might have 12 of those Itron smart meters, it would be at 19.8.
I'm interested in...
Yeah. So let me give this to you, and I can email you with more information about who the organizations are. There's lots and lots of research out there that shows that this is not safe. I'm sorry, we cannot really trust our independent agencies to really protect our public health. And lately, I've been reading the founding fathers, and I know they cared about our general welfare, and I know they didn't expect these agencies to turn into what they have become. And I also know that they valued education, so keep your library, put as many books and as many computers in it as you can, so people can be informed and be a part of the process.
Thanks.
And I'll give this to you.
My name is Andy Brown, B-R-O-W-N, and I am a resident of Renton. So, my only question about the smart meters, about the testimony that's been given tonight is, is how does it get followed up, and how do we find, how do we know what the next step is, that you are going to consider it, and, and then how do you deliver that information to the residents?
I'm just gonna, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Corbin.
I'm just gonna say, I think at this point, we, we don't know. Democracy is the best system in the world, but it doesn't work quickly, and I think, as council, we haven't discussed it, I don't know if we're ready to discuss it tonight. The utilities, department, yeah, the utilities committee considered it, but they haven't brought a report forward.
It was just a briefing.
It's just a briefing. Okay, so, I don't, I don't really know the answer yet. I just wanted you to not think you're getting stonewalled.
My name is Judy Milligan, and I've lived in Renton since 1984. At one point, I was on the library board for the city of Renton for about 10 years from, in the 80s. I felt like the library was very well managed at that time, and I am, I remain very proud of that library, and I would like to see the existing space kept the same. I am wondering what King County wants to do when they say 21st century library services. What does that mean? I don't know what that means. I have been involved with libraries that were with books, audio, visual recordings, and computers. And I do know that we solicited donations at that time from the public. We would take li, library books in, and people would donate them in honor of a loved one, and it's very disheartening to see an organization, I own, when Renton Library got rid of books, they would sell them to the public. KCLS, what I'm hearing is that they're just putting them in a dumpster. I'm not really sure what happened there. I'm also not sure what happened to the security system. So I don't, within weeks of KCLS taking over, so I'm not sure what's happening with, with the books, and there are some Northwest history collections that are impactful. I would like to see those kinds of things preserved. Who has ownership, is my question, of these books now? Is, is it Renton, or is it KCLS? That, so, those are my concerns. What does a 21st, how is that different than what we had?
About the only thing we can do is strongly urge that you meet with KCLS to get your questions answered.
Get those things, okay. So those are, those, I could do that. And so those were some of my questions, and then as far as the ADA remodeling, are we required to remodel this library because of the inter-local agreement? Or is this a King County, KCLS library interest in building programs? So, it's, it's a balancing act with the funding. And so, that is, that is my concern. It seems they're a little too interested in building to actually provide library services. I think they are actually too distinct type of things, and so I would encourage you to push on them a little bit that way, too, because you are a bigger, you're bigger than I am. And so, also, as a, if I have another minute, fluoridation is something that I have seen a, been involved with research. I'm a pharmacist also, and I have seen some fluoridation research since the 70s. And the, the benefit has been claiming that it does decrease tooth decay, and we have seen that. But the best method of using the fluoride is, is probably not the water system. Grandma has constipation. As a pharmacist, I don't recommend that we put laxatives in the public water supply to treat all the consti, all the, the population that has constipation. I mean, we don't mass medicate via water. I don't think that's the best plan. I think that as getting children to drink water, you see how much water your children drink. I think it's better, we have applications of fluoride to the teeth, we have fluoridated toothpaste, fluoridated mouth rinses. I think those are probably safer ways to go. Also, the pH of, needs to be adjusted regularly, and it does increase price of maintenance of the pipes. They have to replace sooner, the pH has to be monitored, that type of thing. So, and as a pharmacist, I do see people that do have problems with the fluoride. So, thanks for looking into that, too.
My name's Colleen Mayer, and I didn't come to speak initially because I just found out about the meter thing very, about 5:00 to 7:00 tonight, and I wanted to come hear that, and I need to do a lot more research before I can even pretend to be knowledgeable on it. But two things...
Excuse me, would you give your city of residence?
Oh, Renton. I'm, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I had a question and then a comment on the two other topics. One on the waters, over the past year, I've noticed a big change in the water that we have. Did we change how we were getting our water? I'm just curious, because it's not, doesn't seem to be the same at all. Okay. Thank you on that. And just on the library, in, in the opening, where it is, the entrance right now, there's a lot of talk about aesthetics and such, but as a parent, I wanted to say that that opening was so important for my kids when they were little, because you went down, we had a library that was closer, but you went down to the big library, and it was a wonderful trip, and the kids would be excited because there was the river there, and there was the park, and as you went into the library, they saw all these wonderful things, and it made them interested in going, and I think that that was part of the reason they became so interested in books and read so early and so much. And every time we went on that bridge, we looked down in the water, if there were salmon, and talked about life cycles and time of year, and we watched the water come up and go down, and talk about, talked about things like the weather and why it was where it was. And so it's a wonderful, wonderful kickoff, and I think very important for the young, the young people to start learning about science and such. And so, I mean, there's a lot of good reasons, it looks pretty and such, but I would really hate to lose that entrance, just because of what it offers, you know, the, the young kids coming in, and that kickoff to science, and as well as making the library and the reading so interesting and exciting. So I just wanted to put that forth. Thank you.
Thank you. What's, what's the wish of the council?
Uh, Sue, we got a couple more people, Mr. Mayor. You gonna come?
Kathy Ozenkop. And just reflecting on the Renton Library, I would like for you to stand by the library and see the children bolt out of that building and down the walkway, and pat that child on the head as they leave. This should be on YouTube, and if you haven't looked at the child's head, you need to, because the, the bronze is all worn off from the children patting that statue as they bolt out of the building. So it's, it's an absolutely lovely facility that we have, and we don't want to lose that entrance anyway. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
I think we got one more person coming up. Got one comment I want to make.
Hi, Nancy, again, and as for all these wavelengths at cell phones and stuff, the things are tested singularly. They are not tested in a group. And, and we're putting, with these smart meters, something on top of stuff that we already have. In my yard, there's a, a big telephone thing that keeps a hum that I detest, but it's, I have an easement, and they can do that. So I don't know if that's contributing it, but, but the birds didn't go away when they installed that. I thought wildlife would be affected, but the moles, the gophers kept coming, and the flicker kept coming, and the birds kept coming. But it's only, it's only this winter that they disappear. And, and so, like I said, and this is, the, the thing is, is that if we can, if we can speed this up and maybe do a more tour for a couple of months, then we wouldn't be wasting time on, on, and since it's nesting season as well, birds are starting to nest from the flicker. This would be an opportune time soon to do that, instead of waiting until later where they're nesting someplace else and you'd not get the response. Like, you know, I could tell whether the birds are being affected by it, because they would be pecking at my wall and building their nests, and that would be everywhere. And plus... And plus, you wouldn't have all the expense of all these new installations. So by cutting, by doing this in a prompt way, you would cut costs and find out your answer quicker. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
I guess I'd like to talk to my colleagues on utilities and just decide if we should move this subject into committee of the hall or...
If you'd like to, Mr. Chair?
I, I guess...
You're welcome to.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking, I, I don't want people to keep feeling like they have to come to every audience comment to try and guess at when we might talk about it as a council, maybe we'd be better off just putting it in a certain...
Yeah, and, and also, if I, if I could add to that, one of the questions that I had in our meeting earlier was perhaps getting a little bit more information, you know, in that meeting, some additional, one of the questions that I had was, was there any, 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 any research out there that was contrary to what we had heard in our briefing that demonstrated that there has been some reports that we're hearing tonight? So I would be interested in seeing some more extensive information presented at that meeting too, so I would support it.
That sounds great.
Yeah, so maybe 30 days out or three or four, four weeks out maybe?
Yeah.
So that gives time to do some research and...
At least gives staff enough time now.
So I would move that, yeah, subject go to committee of the hall in about four weeks.
Yes, I moved and seconded to move the issue to committee of the hall, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor.
One, one last thing on this library thing, you know, as I think back again, one of the other things that I did, I want to mention is that, one of the other reasons that I felt very strongly about supporting the annexation in KCLS was that I had learned that one of the things that they had touted was that they involved the community in terms of how they would build their libraries and that the communities were an integral part of that. And I thought, and that each library had the stamp of the community spirit in it somehow, some way. I'm not getting that sense right now and not at all. And I think, and I think that, I think that's, that's, that is so important because we have to live with this library for the next 25 years. And not only live with it, but pay for it. And I think it's real important that, you know, they get on board with the spirit of who needs to be satisfied. And, and I could tell you that it ain't me, you know, singularly, you know, but I think that it needs to be addressed through you and, and they need to make sure that that library is going to be one that everybody accepts, supports, gets behind and is looking forward to using over the next couple of decades.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. It's a move of the...
Move, we adjourn, second.
A move by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, so we adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, we adjourn.